All right, so start this meeting. Oh, sorry, I didn't stand up. Sorry, I was fixing stuff, let's wait. So will you call me to order or do road calls so everyone is present? And then we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's that? All right, first thing we'll do is discuss any changes addition. It looks like items three and 11 have been removed. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'd also like to do, when we get to the items that are grouped, like Will Creek, Springbrook, maybe try to do those as a whole, not as all at one time up front, but when we get to them, group those together, like items four and five, seven and nine, twelve through fourteen. All right, so we've seen the change in agenda. Do we have a motion to approve, Megan, agenda?
Mike Muschler for Megan, agenda.
We have a motion to approve. We got a second?
Second.
Motion second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, move on to approval of the prior minutes in the March thirteenth, twenty-two and three meeting. If I have any comments or corrections. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, we got a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll get into the agenda. We do have a public hearing tonight, item number two. No one signed up to speak, but we'll bring it up, item number two. Item number one's parks, phase one, request subdivision bond reduction, please.
This is a formality. We brought parks, phase one, two, and three A to you guys for the bond reduction. This should have been on there. There was a revision and public works has agreed that this should be reduced to zero as well. So again, just kind of some housekeeping to reduce this along with the others that we did. Public works has reviewed and agreed that everything has been done.
And this was, he said, priority acceptance is more like a maintenance bond?
Well, no, I'm gonna bring it for acceptance next week. They already had their maintenance bond on it last year. It should have been reduced to zero.
Okay. All right, any questions on this? All finished? You have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, we got a second?
Second.
Motion second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, again, this is the public hearing, all, it's the first, Bill Morris Lee, request recommendation to the Board Mayor Alderman to DNX five point four acres. Sounds like it's sections of property along North Palmers Chapel Road. So, Saint John, I'd like to explain more.
So, if you guys have, you've driven out North Palmers, there are two houses, four houses, two separated by a lot, which is going to be an easement to this lot. The developers building the own property in the county, about two hundred and seventy-five feet, I'd say, extend into the city. Again, that easement is between those four houses that you can see with the red line. So he's asking planning commission and board of Alderman to remove that frontage from the city and let it be into the county. And I think he's here, if you had any questions for him regarding that.
Megan, say it. If you want, open up the public hearing, does anybody want to speak on this? All right, if you want to call it.
No, this property here, my daughter and son-in-law want to purchase this and they want to build one house on it. It's currently zoned, R twenty. We did not even know that it was in the city. The current owner didn't know it was in the city until I went and started to do the permitting process. It's been septic approved and the spot that they need to build the house is, you see the shaded portion there? That's the septic area. In front of that is the best place for the house and that's where they want it. And just right there, part of that is in the city limits, is what I've been told. So we just, we want their house to be outside of city limits instead of boring under North Palmers and to tile the sewer and that sort of thing.
Rest of the three hundred feet will remain in the city, the frontage and whatever?
I don't, well...
He's asking for everything to be outside the city.
Yeah, basically.
All the way up to the road?
No, that, what you see, those houses, that's a set of houses, that's a housing, two lots. Four middles in.
Because the five point four acres, it's not all in the city, is it?
Part of it is, part of it is not.
If you're not asking the DNX five point four acres, you're just asking, yes?
The portion that's in the city is...
Just the part that's inside the city limits, yeah, yeah. Just a matter of portion.
Yeah, like if you see the shaded portion on there, that's not in the city limits, but that's where the septic is supposed to go, so, you know, it's not the best place to build the house by swapping the two. And you'd have to get it, you know, soil tested and all that kind of stuff.
Because the area is outlined in green, the orange with the green outline.
That's correct.
Sorry, the purple.
So you'll still have road, you'll still have those homes that are in the front?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's not affecting the existing homes. I don't, I don't have anything to do with that. This is just, I'm up here building a house for free for my daughter.
The part in the middle, is that owned by you two?
It will be owned by my daughter and son-in-law. That is the access point to this property.
Okay, and nothing, so nothing on that?
Correct.
Nobody to drive access.
Is that part in the county also, that part that's in the middle?
The part right there in the middle is currently in the city. Uh, to, well, to a point it is.
Does it have the same problem as this part?
Well, it would, but it's not, it's not a spot to build a house there, so you wouldn't run across this if you left it five acres.
Yeah, just a conversation. I reached out to the county planner to let him know that if this move over, we would set a date of when this would be affected. The county would have to rezone it before they could take it in, so.
Only one house can be back there?
Yeah.
Um, well, I mean, it's R twenty. I mean, I mean, no, there's no plans of any other house back there, it's, you know...
You gonna put that into deed restriction?
No matter to me, I mean, it's their property or will be their property.
Valerie and I are about to access drive in. It looks like the first portion of it would be in the city. It still may be, have city taxes, half of them located.
Yeah.
Can you permit, it would require our template concrete driveway access coming into it too, so, you know, unless you take that little section out too, or currently we can just, for your information.
Well, that's cool, that's fine. I think they'll probably concrete the drive anyway, so that's not gonna, that would be a deal's long.
Could we not take that out all the way to the road?
I mean, yeah, we'd prefer just take the whole thing out.
I mean, I think it would be best, my opinion, and kind of the county situation too, I mean, I think it would be best just to take the whole thing out of the city.
If it's only just U and D, wasn't it, you have a rock, you know, stone and driving going in, or at least the first section of how you decide, I don't think you'd do that anyway.
They're gonna, I mean, they're gonna build a nice house, you know, I'm sure. It's gonna be, it's gonna be concrete anyway.
Hey, it looks like the areas that will, even if you take all them out, none of those areas are big enough to build anything.
Right.
So it's not like you're building, taking the lot out.
No, it's not. They, they, my son-in-law would like to acquire part of Mr. Garrett's property at some point, but there's no guarantee he'd ever be able to do that, just make, you know, give him another couple of acres or something.
This is a unique request, okay. All right, we do, I did tell no one signed up to speak on the public hearing. All right, we got any comments or questions about this?
So what do we, what do we know?
Recommend DNX and Board Mayor Alderman. My understanding, but now they will go out.
It'll be the parcel, it'll be the correct parcel to be DNX.
To DNX the entire parcel, all the way out to the road?
Yes.
Yes, I make a motion that we...
They don't, they don't, he says it.
You don't know it yet, right?
They do not have the... Well, the owner has...
The owner's agreeable with it.
Yeah, the owner, I signed paperwork with the owner. He let me come up here and speak on his behalf.
This has already been worked out. Am I correct? This has been worked out with the owner?
Yes.
Yes, they have.
With the owner, you got something in writing?
So I think you got a motion to DNX, recommend DNXation for the...
Recommend DNXation the entire part. All the way to the road.
Would you have a motion? Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I don't remember us doing this without the owner being here before.
It says the owner or representation.
Yeah, there's a paper that I filled out and it had owner and it said, it had actually a place on there for authorization for me to be here for.
And they signed.
But I've got it signed.
Okay.
I see where the owner signed.
I guess, yeah.
Go back there, that old junkie has lucky uses there.
Yeah, well, I got some used tires from my foot out there. They won't be in the city anymore.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to recommend to the Board Mayor Alderman DNXation of the fire five point four acres. All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'll move on here. Item number three has been removed. Item number four and five are going to look together. I'm sorry, I'll explain a little bit. Will Creek subdivision phase one's a revision regarding dedicate roadway at the intersection of South Palmer's Chapel Road and easements for roadway improvement. So that's number four, is the revised master, final flat revision. Number five is the revised, final master plan amendment, but it sounds like they're the same issue.
Yeah, just, just for consistency sake, whenever there's any change, it has to come before you guys, or even the most minor change. And because they're putting that signal light and they're putting a turn lane, northbound turn lane in, they have to make the revisions to this right, right away.
Any update on the signal?
Yes, so, this is Willa Grove. Willa Grove paid their offset and it be read in the resolution. With Willa Grove paying at one hundred and ten thousand to St. Harbor, who's gonna install the red light? So only if they've ordered, they have the materials on order. And we're told it should be any, any day now that they get going with that.
Am I right? This was done, of course, before I was on this board, but that red light has to be installed before they can actually get a CO on either of the cars, correct?
Not Willa Grove, St. Harbor.
St. Harbor.
St. Harbor, yeah. This is Lennar, Willa Grove. They, they had to pay their offset impact fees, so they've done everything to satisfy that agreement. This development has. The next one we talk about is the one that...
Okay, I thought that, I thought that applied to this one.
Well, Willa Grove had to pay their offset off-site impact fees of one hundred and ten thousand, which they done.
Right.
They had the least amount of homes in this, so they had some, you know, other, you know, if you look at the agreement, but like I said, St. Harbor was the one that bear most of the burden on all the improvements along Tyree.
Did Mike's question get answered? They can't get certificates of occupancy?
Not, not, not this development, the next one we talk about.
The one across from the South Palmer's.
The next one we talk about, yeah.
Yeah.
I thought we gave...
I thought this was...
They paid, they had to pay impact fees and they done that. They had to pay that fee.
The way we started...
More confusion than it was.
Yeah, let me see if I can... We had two part, we had two properties that's gonna be developed at the same time.
Okay.
So we worked on agreement that we would, we would accept the impact fees for the smaller project up front and then we would pass that through to the other, to St. Harbor. We held on to it for about a year, waiting for the traffic light to be built, because St. Harbor wasn't supposed to go there and build that traffic light. But due to delays and miscommunication we see, and developers, and finally, it took them a while to get there. So we finally went, I knew they were moving forward, we went ahead and paid, passed the money through to St. Harbor. So they have, they have their money now. So the other, now, St. Harbor, their impact fees are gonna be basically waived, but they had to do, build the traffic light, they had to put a sidewalk that connects from Lennar subdivision all the way to White House, I looked at the greenway there, and then fix the traffic light, put some, dedicate turn lanes at the White House intersection. So that's what they have to do to meet their obligation. The reason the traffic light had gone up is because of various reasons, but one of them was, when Lennar put their entryway in there, they didn't get T-DOT approval. So, and they have to have a permit to be able to do that, and because they didn't, when T-DOT looked at it, they said, well, it's gotta be shifted over. So, and then when they shifted it, they put it on a waterline, and waterline now has to be, right? Has to be moved, and before they could go out there and figure out where exactly to put the poles for the traffic lights. So that's where they're at with that. Now, the ones who cannot occupy, well, now, Lennar can occupy their houses. And I don't think they've done that yet, because I think they were waiting for, they had a sewer, so you don't have the electric hooked up to their, to their lift station. They can't flush toilets, so you can't, they're not gonna let, our planning board is not gonna let them move any of their homes until they can flush toilets. So when that happens, they can start doing that. So, St. Harbor is the one that's gonna have to hold up, and they know they can't, because right now, from my understanding, they're, builder of the homes, they're buying, they're buying lots, is not willing to move forward until they know they can get occupancy when they build the house. So, you know, when you build a house, they don't wanna have ten houses sitting there on Oakley County, like Lennar's sitting here with probably twenty, twenty, you know, not being occupied. They don't wanna put anything there, so, there, until they get the traffic light up, they can't occupy, and that's what I've been telling anybody that's called, because it's concerns, that you don't see any houses yet being built there. They see the houses on Lennar, they think, well, that's where the traffic light, that responsibility was shifted to St. Harbor. Yeah, so that's how that works, so.
Clears it up for everybody. I do have the resolution right here, word for word, if you need it, and have the law...
I thought neither one of them could build, could occupy, and appeal the red light, I understand, you too, that's disent...
That's kind of my understanding.
I'm like you, I don't think anybody could occupy anything.
Nobody could occupy until the red light was...
Till the light was up. That's what I thought too.
I mean, that's not the way the resolution was written up and was approved by Board Mayor Alderman, so that's right here in the paper. What it has to do, yeah, Lennar can occupy, but St. Harbor cannot.
Is that something Valerie wrote or something you wrote or...
Those were different, you know, approvals, like one was approved at one time. One of them is the James and Lori Doris property, and that's the one that has the houses. And then the Bob Doris property is the one where they cannot. And that was...
But our whole discussion was for safety and we're gonna open up the subdivision there, the lesser houses, but still no red light. So I've been telling everyone, nobody's gonna move in those because until the red light comes.
That's what I've been told.
Taking me and turn me into a liar, basically, to tell people false information. That's kind of...
Sounds like there was a misunderstanding.
Because when we're talking all together and back and forth, and who is paying for why and all this kind of thing?
That's the way it was set up, that was, it was meant that it's Willa Grove, which I guess is, is St. Harbor...
And then, and then what, the sidewalk can be built in stages? Or is it gotta go all the way to the...
Yeah, the first phase is before they can get their second flat, or final flat approval. They have to have a sidewalk on the east side, I mean, on the west side of the road from one end of their property line to the other. That's what they're supposed to have done before you approved the second flat, which is denied, so. That's what they have to do.
So we blame the misunderstanding, Mike, proceed, just got it.
Well, it's misunderstanding, I mean, I understand what you're all saying, but I mean, this is a while, and we did this, we did that resolution, it's been a while, you know, so I can see where you...
It had too many moving parts.
It does. It had several moving parts to make it all work out, that's the way it's set up and rethink it.
So these projects together makes it confusing, start planning stuff.
Well, they also had, one of the things, just to explain it, is they both, Jerry said they were coming together, they were submitting plans very close together. They were submitting traffic studies, and this scenario is what caused that. Both of them are showing a shared requirement. I mean, the traffic studies were independent, but it's saying, all right, this has gotta be done, and this has gotta be done. So really, it was, it was a struggle to make that coordination work, because if you didn't, one of them, one of them had slightly different requirements than the other, but there were also shared requirements in that study that would say, you have to do this and you have to do this, you can't put in two traffic centers. So it was, it was a struggle to try to make that work.
Neither, neither one, neither one of the traffic studies said that either one of them had to put traffic lights together. Not even together. We made them. So that was part of the agreement. If they wanted the subdivision approved, they were gonna have to put a traffic light there.
So stupid question, what happened to St. Harbor's side hard deal that is done? Do we still get a law?
Somebody wants to buy that property, so I'm sure somebody's done a lot of work in there already.
But then we'll have Lennar occupied, so, but then we'll have Lennar occupied.
Right, but it has, Lennar in itself, the traffic study does not require a traffic light, in and of itself does not require it.
If something, let's just say something, Lennar, I mean, St. Harbor with a larger farm, I mean, that plan, they, they would be required to, be tied to that plan, so two years from now, it's nothing done, it goes back to our point of what it was, this farm land. Even that's, that's case there, if we didn't want it...
That's before planning commissions, you know, were told that they can no longer require something that's new, but we did require traffic signalization, which was not required by either traffic study, or either subdivision, even to be unrequited. For the traffic improvements that we're making at Raymond Hurst and, by the way, school and the Tyree, those improvements were not required, either. That was something that they brought to the table, so we need to get that done too, so...
That's a question that, Will Grove, sounds like it's to alter the final flat for easement rather than dedicate, dedication for the termite program. What's the... Item four and five, and both of them are just for the easement or anything?
Yes.
Any questions, comments about the roadway operation or easement? All right, you have a motion?
Motion to approve item four and five.
Got a motion to approve, we have a second?
Second.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four, five, approved. Item number six, Smyrna Ready Mix, request site plan approval for a concrete plant. This is at one thirty Center Drive, the property is on I two heavy industrial. I know we talked about a concrete, possibly a different area, but quite a resounding, but this one, this already is on I two heavy industrial.
Yeah. So this is on Center Drive further back, you know, as you said, it's already on I two. It was brought before us last month, they were missing a lot as it relates to the site plan. They haven't addressed all staff issues as it relates. There are some questions I've had about air quality, and they, they will be required to get T-DOT approvals, another state approval before they're operational, but none of that's in our state rate, I mean, in our city rate, so they've met, everything is required by our site plan requirements.
Height requirements is met, too? Any height requirements?
Not, it's any height requirements.
Well, silo, what the hell it has?
Fifty-three feet is what it took.
Eighty-one feet, I'm lying, I'm sorry. If yours is eighty-one feet just as the silos... The back silo, then you have your thirty-two feet here, so your two silo areas being eighty-one.
By the far, are there any concerns that they would be considering?
I know, last time we talked about concerns, more about, I guess, the roadway condition out there, Center Drive seventy-six. Is there any kind of traffic study, any concern with the number of vehicles coming at that point? Well, we don't know what they're, I don't want to get back here representing, what they think there is to be at peak hours.
We did not request it on this one. This one, we had looked at that, one of the things here, I mean, it couldn't have been all as far as we were estimating the amount of traffic there, but it's further back in the, in the development. My thoughts was that if it changed anything, it would likely be the timings at the city and not necessarily any landage, so we did not actually, it doesn't prevent anyone else hearing from, saying that they think that's needed, but that was, that was my fault. Now, it does not cover what you're concerned about, which is the condition back there, so, yeah, I do think the heavy loads are gonna have some impacts, but that would, that would not necessarily cover it in that study.
Yeah, I guess you don't rethink, but using that stat, you take some more and build yourself up. All right, we have any other questions about it? Maybe something about I two, so, if we have any other questions, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Item six approved. We're going, item number seven, eighty-nine, this is Springbrook Final Master Plan Amendment. And then, item eight is Springbrook Final Flat, which is based on the final master plan. And number nine is Phase Four Final Flat, which is based on the master plan. We'll review on any major, but we'll load on the whole one, so, all right, see, you want to say it's all?
So the final master plan, this is, okay, another minor change, but he's adding that amenity, they're adding a mailbox kiosk and some added parking. So, again, the change of final master plan, it's not something I can do procedurally in-house, so that's why I asked the developer, the engineer to submit this, so that's what this final master plan change is, and the final flats are reflected up there as well.
I see this is an improvement, or improvements.
Yeah, I was saying, but like I said, I wish I could have approved it on my own.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as the board member, I see this as an improvement.
It's nice to have a dedicated area of parking, so you see them, the plus offs went on these across the board, you'll see it just a little box here and there, so this is a lot of dedicated area for people to pour over, so. And items eight and nine are just final flats based on the final master plan, they're consistent, appear to be consistent with the final master plan. All right, so any questions on items seven, eight, or nine? Springbrook's only been going on since like nineteen eighty-nine, so it's kind of good to see, see, finish that, so. All right, we don't have any questions, we have a motion?
Like a motion, yeah.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Seven, eight, nine are approved. Oh, any opposed, I'm sorry. All right, seven, eight, nine. Number ten, Pleasant Grove Parking Lot Vision, Club of Engineering. This is on three, thirty-one, thirty-five Pleasant Grove, grown property is on I one, lot industrial. Appears they're not building a new access drive, it's just additional parking home of property that's set.
Yeah, this is more than, that would allow me to approve, as a staff approval, so bringing this before you, they, they, the rest, the staff had, including landscaping, lighting, and just, just to give you a little play for what this is, though, this, these guys are gonna manufacture tiny houses on that, on that site, that'll just do it, sort of, I mean, it won't be manufactured, but they'll be assembling and building tiny houses. This guy, they're also, just didn't have anything to do with this, but they're also looking at other properties in White House, in the industrial area, build on as well, doing things in White House, so.
All right, any questions about this, or comments? All right, no comments, have a motion?
Motion to approve item ten.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve, first, a motion on the second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is approved. Item number eleven was withdrawn, so that brings up item number twelve, thirteen, and fourteen. This is the Doris Farm at Will's Springs. This is Phase Two, Section one A, for twenty-five single family lots, final subdivision flat. Item number thirteen is same development, Phase Two, Section one B, final flat approval for thirty-one lots, and then Doris Farm at Will's... And then Doris Farm at Will's Springs, Phase Two, Section Two, this is also sixty-one, uh, single-family lots. So these are final subdivision flats for all three of these items. And this, is this the project, you say it's under construction?
Yeah, this is the project we were talking about with the, uh, majority of stipulation from the resolution, uh, and, uh, this came, they probably submitted this in November or December, uh, and I held it off until, uh, you know, until they started construction, at least on, based on what the resolution says, the ruined sidewalk, for their Phase Two approval.
Are they consistent with the master plan?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, uh, we will, we can talk about it individually, but, uh, we're gonna vote for all of them at one time. Any questions or comments on any of the items, this final subdivision flat? Alright, we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, we have a second?
Second.
Motion, we have a second, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. Uh, Alderman Hudson did have a question, uh, about the vice chair, requesting a, a change on that.
Yeah, I took the vice chair as just an interim, you know, all the, uh, new members have a little time to settle in, so, uh, I'm gonna turn down my vice chair now for someone else. I, I just don't think in the later future, it shouldn't be a chair or a vice chair of any committee, uh, maybe the citizen boards, and I think just citizens, the chairs and the vice chairs, so.
Back tonight, I'm not gonna be vice chair, so we just got a, a, a vice chair, because it's gonna vote for Terry too, which is... Is anybody, uh, who'd be interested? Anyone, not that I know, or nominee, or, you know, who are involved in it?
As he's been a, uh, involved in this for, I don't know, what, close fifteen years in the county, uh, I would recommend that, uh, we, you know, make a motion.
Alright, we have a motion for Mr. Hudson, we have a second? Alright, he nodded his head.
All papers say aye? That's all you're gonna get out of me.
Any opposed, I guess? Alright, good. I guess, or anything else to discuss tonight? Not, we're adjourned.